Okay, good, good, good. Don't ask me what goes on from Wednesday to Wednesday, but this is the last Wednesday, so we thank the Lord for today. Can we just get excited with what the Lord has done with all the powerful testimonies? Reverend Greenlee needless Bible study. Amen. We just thank God for what he has done and is doing. Just wanna praise you forever and ever and ever for all you've done for me. Blessings and glory and honor, they all belong to you. Thank you, Jesus, for blessing me. I just wanna thank, praise you forever and ever and ever for all you've done for me. Blessings and glory and honor, they all belong to you. Thank you, Jesus, for blessing me. Amen, amen. We thank the Lord for, amen, blessing us, keeping us, for the Holy Spirit just stirring up the gift, the gift within us. We thank God for teaching us and growing us and helping us to learn faithfulness towards Him. I'm reminded of the two gardens with two outcomes. You had the Garden of Eden and the Garden of Gethsemane, which shows us one was self-will and the other was God's will. In the Garden of Eden, it was self-will. Adam wanted to do and please himself. But we learn in the Garden of Gethsemane, Jesus showed us God's will. Not my will, but dying will be done. So we thank the Lord for just teaching us faithfulness and teaching us to surrender His will in His way. This is what I've learned. You are not considered faithful until you resist the opportunity to be unfaithful. So you can say you're faithful all you want, but it's not until you resist the opportunity to be unfaithful, that's when you're considered faithful. All right, so we all faithful right about now, but it's not until that opportunity arises for us to resist. Amen? So we thank God for this Holy Spirit leading and guiding us and teaching us faithfulness, what it is to be faithful, what it is to persevere, what it is to endure. This is what we're learning of Him. His long suffering, His endurance, His perseverance towards us, and our job is to learn, to learn of Him. And so this is what we have been coming together to practice and learn is the nature and attributes of our Father. What good is it to have a Father and you don't know anything about Him? And so we thank the Lord for that which has been revealed to us. It's more sensitive to you and I because we are children of God. Whereas the world may say today is a good day, but they have no meaning heart maybe behind it. But when we say it, we include in our Father, who created all things, that today is a good day because we know everything comes from Him. So being children of God, we are more sensitive to the things of God. We are made more aware. The Holy Spirit makes us more aware. He reveals to us the excellencies or the attributes or the nature of God. He only say what He hears. The Bible tells us because the three are one. And so we move into this last part before we go into our summer break. And summer break is just that we done ate so much all winter and spring. We gotta jog some of this stuff off. And so it's my prayer during the break. The break is for you to exercise off what you have eaten. And so my prayer is that you run into more people than you used to run into this summer so that you can witness to them and share with them all that you have eaten throughout the winter and the fall and the spring. And so when we come back, we'll pick back up Lord's will where we left off at. So it's not a break from Christ. Amen? It's not a break from Scripture. It's not a break from prayer. It's not a break from fasting. Amen, this is what we do. We have eaten so much. You have to push away from the table. Somebody just saying walk some of it off. You gotta walk some of it off. You're gonna have to. You can't keep witnessing to yourself every day. You gotta walk some of this stuff off. And so we have to start applying that which we have learned and start holding on to that which we have received from the Lord. I know it's gonna happen. It has happened to me thus far that the Lord, the Holy Spirit, will recall some of the things that you have learned and bring it to your remembrance right when you need it. And you wanna thank the Lord that you received it. Your ears were open to receive the wisdom and the word of the Lord. And so that's my prayer for you during our break. Amen, so that we'll have triple amount of testimonies coming back from how we have shared the gospel of the good news or the good news of Jesus Christ. So we thank God. We are stirred up in the Lord. We're stirred up in Christ to do the work He has called us to do. So tonight, we want to look in, look at and observe this part of who our Father is, His holiness, the holiness of God. And it's amazing how these topics kinda run after one another. I have a list of topics and I'll say I'm gonna teach this, 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 and this. And then after, you know, studying, the Lord would switch things around. So now my number three is my number eight and my number two was my number thirteen and my number. And so I, you know, I just scratched all the numbers off and I just wait for the Lord to tell me which topic He wants, you know. I think the Lord laughs at our plans sometimes. He don't mind you making him, but He laughs at them. But it's amazing how this one will, how this, the holiness of God ties into what we have learned last week about where and who God is, where He stands, and how wonderful it is to know that He is outside of time. It's wonderful to know that He is not moved by creation in the way that we think. He is not bothered by time. The Bible tells us if a day is like a thousand years, we can see that God does not move with time. He has His own plan, His own purpose. Our job is to participate in it. Amen? That's the exciting part. Here is before we go on, let me just tell you how exciting this. God wakes you up and asks you to participate in His plan. You know how wonderful that is? You know how, because He could have excluded you, overlooked you and I, but He woke us up. He saved us so that we can participate in His plan. In the process, we have the unspeakable joy, the peace that surpasses all the understanding, the guidance of the Holy Spirit, the power of the Holy Spirit. In all this, we are covered by the blood of Jesus Christ. He watches over us. He's our shield and buckler. And while we are participating in His plan, where He moves us like pawns so that we can be best used by Him. This is not on the agenda, but it just reminds me. The reason why as a child of God, our job is not to get frustrated where we are because He moves us best where He can use us. A lot of times, we wanna be used or move ourselves best way we can use ourselves. Most of the time, it's in self-righteous self-adversment, is pleasing oneself. But when you're a child of God and you're surrendering to the will of God, He shifts and moves you in the best position that He can use you. And He shifts you there with all the anointing you need to carry out His plan. Wouldn't it be messed up to have a fire in the house and the fireman shows up walking down the street with no fire truck, no hose, no water, no jacket, nothing on? He just walks down the street and he just looks at the situation. What good would that be to be a fireman and have him there but can't do anything for you? But God puts us in position where we come up on the scene well-equipped to handle the fires. Okay, one person shook their head. You know, I try to do this to wake everybody up. You know, today is a new day. Great is thy faithfulness. Let me wake your spirit up. Great is thy faithfulness. We've been mended for a night, but joy coming to the morning. I just wanna wake your spirit up a little bit. Today is the day of the Lord. We're gonna be glad, we're gonna rejoice in it. Just wanna wake your spirit up a little bit. He didn't have to do it, but He did. Amen, amen. So He puts us in position where we are already anointed and equipped to handle where we are. The key is to first ask Him and rely on Him for guidance. Amen, amen. So you're never in a position where you're not equipped to handle what you need to handle. And when He puts more on you, because God will put more on you. He puts more on you so that you can depend more on Him. Sometimes the Lord will lay a heavy load on me and I say, "Lord, I can't handle this." He said, "Well, you right where I need you because you can't do nothing without me, but all things are possible to Him who believe." Amen? How many ready to go into this topic? The holiness, the holiness of God. Of course, this guy wanted to give you a quote before his summer break and I just told him, "Go ahead, write it down." And I just let them just do what they need to do. So this guy here, Dr. Thomas C. Cunningham, he made this quote. He said, "We are made aware of our need of God's grace when our humanness is confronted by the splendor and holiness of God." That's when we are made aware that we need His grace when we are confronted by the splendor and holiness of our Father. It's when we run into Him, we realize who is going to help us in the presence of a holy God. So this is what makes us aware that we need this thing called grace bestowed upon us because how could we confront or be in the face of a holy God? Did you all write that down? If nothing else, just fake it and make it seem like you just excited to hear from this guy. You know, if nothing else. All right, let's get into these questions here before we get into our study. The first question, and I want you to answer, is what does it mean that God is a holy God? What does it mean that God is a holy God?
Oh, Pastor?
Got you.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I believe it's, what does it mean to, what does it mean that God is a holy God? It means that His characteristics. I was reading while you were talking a while earlier. I was looking at Leviticus 11:44 and it says, "Be holy because I'm holy."
Yes.
And so you can't even approach being, understanding God unless you approach Him in a holy way because that's who He is.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Brother Chauncey. It's good to see your face and praying the Lord's blessings and favor upon you and mercy as you continue to heal.
Amen, thank you, sir.
Amen. Anybody wanna piggyback off Brother Chauncey?
I would say he's pure. Holiness means that he's pure, that he's untainted, you know, he's not corruptible. So when we approach God and we're seeking holiness, we have to be reminded that, yeah, that we're faced with challenges and we face with temptation, but we still have to have a pure, go-to-God with a pure heart. You know, yeah, pure, that's what I said.
Okay, okay. All right, it means he's pure. Rev?
I would also add that he should be reverenced because of his holiness.
Okay, reverence because of his holiness. Anyone else? This is the last day of school and promotion time. See if you are moving to the next level. Sister Jasmine?
Well, holy is described as someone worthy of complete devotion. And so that's just exactly what he is. He's, you know, deserving of all, not deserving, but I guess like he's exalted. He is worthy of our complete devotion.
Okay, okay. All right, let's piggyback off this. We're talking about our Father. This is the one we trust and believe and the work He have done that we may have access into His presence through Christ Jesus. So when someone asks about your Father, what can you say? What does it mean that God is, what does it mean that your Father is holy? Anyone else?
Pastor, I'd like to say that he's complete. He lacks nothing.
Okay.
You know, holiness would be that way. He's complete. There's, you can't add to Him or take anything away. He lacks nothing.
Okay, okay. He lacks nothing. He lacks nothing. Digging out, Boo?
Yeah, I can say that he is perfect in everywhere because he's the beginning and he's the end. He can never be late. He can, he will always be at the right time in everything he does. And he is pure, outstanding in all gratification.
Okay, okay. All right, I like that. Always on time, never late, pure, outstanding God. Beginning in the end. He is, he is, he is all. Everything belongs to Him. He's perfect in all His ways. All right, let me ask this question. When we hear the word holy, what comes to mind? Now, when we hear the word holy, what comes to mind? Is this thing on? Is this thing on? Okay, wanna make sure this thing, all right. Sister Renee said reverence. Okay, is that what you said, Sister Renee? Okay, okay.
Untainted.
Untainted.
Perfection.
Perfection. Anybody else? When we hear the word holy, what comes to mind?
Sanctified as well.
Sanctify.
How about everlasting?
Everlasting. Okay, say it again, Brother Chauncey?
Well, he does not conform to a standard.
Doesn't conform to a standard. Reverend Allen?
I hear God.
Okay.
I hear God.
Okay.
I hear divine, divine.
Okay, when it comes to holy, we hear these things. This is what this means to us, divine. Outstanding, faithfulness, perfect when we hear this word, this word holy. All right, my last question. So if you had to describe holiness to someone who had little or no biblical knowledge or background, how would you do it? Now, how would you describe holiness to someone? Holiness now to someone? And you're gonna have to witness this week. First Lady?
I think it's similar to a lot of what has been said. It's sanctified and set apart, just separate from, you know, a life of sin. So holiness, living a pure life. Yeah, and living a life, like I said, that's separate and set apart.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, let me, here's a bonus question. Can you make yourself holy? Can you make yourself holy?
I would say there's only one way that we could make ourselves holy and that would be to submit to the Holy Spirit, who's gonna conform us, make us holy. But in and of our own power, we can't do that.
Okay, okay. All right.
I think that the only way you can make yourself, that's the only way that you can approach God is being holy.
Okay, okay. All right. Jasmine?
Again, when I looked at the definition, it says, "One perfect in goodness and righteousness." So I don't think that we can make ourselves holy. I think that only God is holy.
Okay. Okay, all right. My prayer is that, I got Sister Kenny, that we are, I can strengthen some of the answers. We ourselves cannot do anything. There's no good thing that dwells in us. And everything that we do or try to do is as filthy rags. And so there's nothing that God wants from us outside of us being in Christ. There's nothing that we can do to turn His heart. Nothing we can do to make ourselves where He can look upon us. That's only through the work of His Son, Christ Jesus, on our behalf. And so as much as we can try, you can be, I can be good in the eyes of man. But God doesn't just work off the flesh. He doesn't, He doesn't look off and judge off our flesh. He judge off the intent of the heart or the heart. So where in the eyes of someone else, I can look good, I can may even look holy, but God knows the heart of man. Amen? So you can fool, we can fool one another, but we can't fool God. And He has already told us that there's nothing we can do outside of Him that will be pleasing to Him. Amen? Sister Kenny?
Pastor, you put the exclamation point on the whole matter, but I was gonna say the evidence of that holiness, one of them is the fact that we still, we have to go through Jesus to get to Him. And that's why He's sitting on the mercy seat. So we're not that, we know we're not holy. We thank God, we're learning to be righteous. We're learning how to be, you know, striving for perfection. But nobody's holy but Him. And the only way that we can even reach Him is through His Son. So that shows you how far we are from that. We're getting there, but we're not always there.
Amen, that's the sanctification, that's the work of the Holy Spirit. The Lord said, "Be ye holy, for I am holy," is the walking in righteousness, being just in my eyes, in my will, where I can look upon you as a child of God, one who's obedient to my word. And so with the washing of the word and the washing of the Holy Spirit in our lives, He can strengthen us to be righteous, to be holy per se in God's eye. Be holy, for I am holy, to be righteous, to be walking upright according to His will. And so this is why we need the Holy Spirit, the power of the Holy Spirit, because we cannot do it. You tried it. We have tried it. Listen, and you ain't the only one. Man has tried it from the beginning. Cain tried to approach God in an offering outside of the will of God. And what happened? Where we saw the other example where Abel approached God in the will of God, in the righteous way. And so man has from the beginning tried to do what's right outside of God, which makes things even more worse or wrong. Okay? If man could do it, then Adam, you think Adam would have left Eden? If he had the power to do it on his own, he would say, "Okay, God, I messed up, but I'm gonna clean myself up, but you know, I ain't going anywhere. I'm gonna stay here because I'm gonna get this thing right." No, outside of God, we cannot do anything pleasing to Him. So we need the Holy Spirit to remind us, to strengthen us, to encourage us, to teach us, to guide us in truth so that we can walk righteous in God. Are y'all with me? All right, so.
Man, before you move on, Pastor, I was just thinking of the scripture that says in Hebrew "To follow peace with all men and holiness without which no man shall see the Lord." So I think that with the Holy Spirit, we can, we can be holy, right? Because if we are to have that peace and that holiness, I think from our perspective and our standing, you know, we're not gonna be perfect, right? I think, and this is the great thing of learning the nature and character of God so that we will see things from God's perspective and not ours. But if we are to walk, to follow peace with all men as well as holiness, then with the Holy Spirit, then we are able to be holy, I guess, as far as man can be, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yes. What makes us acceptable in the eyes of a loving God is that we are under the covering of a holy God. We have been made righteous because of the work of Christ Jesus. Outside of God, no man can be holy or righteous. No man can walk just in his outside, eyesight, outside of Him. For it's impossible to please Him. Are you with me? It's impossible to please Him. So this is why we rely on the move guidance, the teaching of the Holy Spirit in our lives so that we can continue to walk upright before Him. Are y'all with me? All right, we'll get a little deeper into this. But let's look at this. Digging out, Boo, you have something you wanna say?
Yes, you just said it because I know like if for us, when you're looking at us, there's nothing holy about us, you know, but in order for you to, you know, allow the Holy Spirit to come in you, you have to accept Christ as your Lord and personal Savior. Then you have opened up for the Holy Spirit to come and walk in you through you. Because when the Holy Spirit is walking in you through you, those people will see the holiness in you because the Holy Spirit of God is walking in you through you.
Right, right, good point. And let's keep this in mind as we move on. It wasn't that God found holy Jasmine. It was that Jasmine found a holy God. Okay? It wasn't that Esther, it wasn't holy Esther. And the Spirit met holy Esther. It was Sister Esther met the Holy Spirit. All right? So in order for us to get an understanding to where we are and be able get an understanding to where we are and be able to comprehend, one is the distance from man to God. All right, the reason why, um, uh, we should always fall in, I, I say this all the time, in worship because of what we have been made aware of by the Holy Spirit. Um, remember the Lord, the Bible says, you didn't find Me. I found you.
Hallelujah!
So much so that you were so lost that you didn't even know you were lost. Hmm. So tainted that you didn't even know that you were stained. I found, I found you. Okay, let's look into this. Uh, we can start off saying, God does not conform to any standard created by others. And what I've been trying to do in this teaching, and I thank the Lord, is to get us back to that place of seeking holiness, seeking righteousness, that place where God is in our hearts, where He is, and not that us trying to bring Him down to a level where one think they can control Him. It's never gonna happen, but your actions will act as if God is on your level. And so, what we're learning is to make sure we recognize that we are, um, such a worm in the eyes of God. That God is who He is, and we are who we are. So we cannot, uh, get God to conform to, to our standards. Now, I'm just gonna walk this, and I'm gonna walk this, I'm not gonna walk the whole summer, but I'm gonna walk the whole Bible study minutes, uh, tonight's teaching, all right? Because I want us to leave with this in our hearts and minds. So He does not conform, uh, to any standard that's created by, by, by others. He is the standard. Therefore, His creation must conform to His. When you come, when you are, and I was, uh, redeemed, we are taught to conform to His standard. Because what good would it be to be redeemed from something if you're gonna bring your standard into something new? So we have been redeemed and been now conformed and transformed to His standard. This is what we're, was being done with you and I every day. We have been transformed. Each Bible study, each Sunday, each time you read your Bible, each time you're doing your study, your home study, you're being transformed by the renewing of our minds, by the renewing of our minds, and the only one that could do that is the Holy Spirit, by the washing of the word in our lives. So the more the, the word of God has been revealed to us, it, it renews our mind. It, it should remind us that we are being moved and made under God's standard and not Him under ours.
Glory!
So if we ever want to find or line something up, you lined it up with the standard. Uh, you lined it up with the standard, see, see, we're so quick to call somebody, say, you know, I'm gonna run this by you and tell me what you think, well, that's human standard, that's, that's, uh, that's man's standard. If you really wanna know, uh, if it's out of the will of God, you have to raise it to His standard. You have to place it to His standard and not your own. Go for it, Sister Pippi.
So, I, I just wanna ask this question, um, so it, so, so do we, so when you think about, when you consider holiness and, and God, and how He wants us to strive to meet His standard, you know, be holy, for I am holy, right? And make sure we're, we're clean, we concentrate ourselves when we sin, we repent. And when you have conversations with other, other Christians, and it's like, you're, you're talking holiness, you know, the lifestyle changes. And then when you try to hold them accountable, because now they feel like they can't get to their standard, none of them don't wanna be accountable, but then we sit and we sing, you know, like, God, we wanna be where you are, but yet we don't wanna be accountable to get to where God is at.
Okay.
Um, so, so, I mean, I, I struggle with that, because is, 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 are we being accountable, are we, are we holding accountability to get to holiness, or, or we just gotta just try to do it like one step at a time with no accountability in there?
Okay, uh, uh, a couple of things, um, with man, we, even though we don't make account, doesn't mean we're not accountable. Okay, even if you say, I'm walking away, I ain't doing nothing, you still held accountable. Okay, the center man is still held accountable, whatever, whatever decision he makes, even the saint is held accountable. Our job, and this, and I'm glad you raised this, uh, Sister Pippi, and this is what I want you all to do saints, is take a deep breath and let the Lord be at work. We're so quick to try to meet a standard for ourselves, we're missing the standard of God. We need to let the Lord do what He needs to do in our lives. We need to follow the Holy Spirit and be obedient. And many of the times, it's by way of testing or trials to get us where we need to be. And so, we have to watch out because we will begin to lean on works outside of our faith in Him.
My God.
To the point where now, we're trying to prove to man what we say we are, but we're not proving to God who He said we are. And one way is by just being obedient to Him. This was, and, and, and it's, it's easy, it's yet hard when you get caught up in trying to prove to someone that I am a child of God. Uh, one thing I can declare to everyone, and you can declare it to me, and we can declare it to the world, I don't have to prove nothing to you. If you can stand with me on judgment, that would be one thing. But because you ain't gonna stand with me, I'm not proving nothing to you. I proved to God, and God proved through me to you who I am. Are y'all with me here? Because if, 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 if not, then every fault, every stumble, every pitfall, every trial, you will be, you'll overwhelm yourself with guilt. And you, and you and I know this, when there's guilt, the enemy comes to keep you from recognizing the grace and mercy of God through your journey. Our job as saints is to rely on the Lord and not on ourselves, and these scriptures come into play, it says, uh, lean not unto thy own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge Him, and guess what He'll do? He'll direct. So Lord, um, make me pleasing to you. Have your way in my life, doesn't mean God's gonna make you martyr. What it does, it means that God will start, now, the Holy Spirit will start convicting you when you're walking outside of the will of God. And that's what you want. Listen, if, if he got, if he has to convict you all day, that's what you want, he's at work. It's when you don't hear Him, when you have to pray, Lord, am I saved, and am I a real child? Uh, but, but, but throughout the day of the Lord's sentence, keep your mind on Me. The Lord says, I'm gonna keep you in perfect peace. The Lord says, uh, I want you to study grace, so do you understand that there, there's times when you have to get up and move on, I still have my hand on your life. You're still anointed in spite of the trial you're facing. Uh, you need that, that's the guidance of the Spirit of God. Because He's guiding you and I through a world that hates us. That has been, that's ruled by the God of this world, who has already blinded the minds of them who don't believe. So we are journeying through this world to a world that hates us with an anointing on our lives. We're protected by God, yet we're still serving Him, but we're walking in the flesh. I, I hope y'all understood all that. I, I understood that, this is why, this is why you gotta die daily. And He has to remind you, did you get that knife out and kill that flesh, 'cause He thought of something that's outside of My will? And the Holy Spirit, what He does is, He guides us through this, this world. But here's the wonderful thing, He says, be not afraid, for I have already overcome, Jesus says. The world, He, He says, be at peace. So, so, so as He grabbed your hands, Sister Pippi, uh, 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 Sister Vern, as He's grabbing our hand, and we're wondering what's going on, He says, be at peace, I've already been down this road for you. Already know where it leads. Your job is to trust Me and let Me conform you to My standards.
Glory!
Now, tonight, while, in all the other studies, uh, while we're taking in the Word of God, it's renewing our minds. I'm not thinking the same, I'm, I'm not doing the same, and if I did, it takes a little while. 'Cause I'm now, when it was, uh, uh, one conviction, now that I'm understanding the Word of God, there's ten convictions before. So it makes me look at my decisions and make me look at my walk, uh, differently because of what I am learning about Him. Are y'all with me here? This is, this is, you know, it's gonna be, uh, um, Christianity 303, this is how powerful tonight, I think, is gonna be. Okay, uh, so we, we're looking up to His standards. Everything about God has been infiltrated by this defining attribute of God called holiness. It's all been infused by what we call, or what He called Himself holy. Therefore, if we want to know God, we must understand the idea of God's holiness. My prayer tonight, as we move on, that it brings chills, uh, when we start to speak of the holiness of God. One of the meaning, means of holiness is the idea of being set apart. Someone said this earlier. God is totally above and beyond us, which is what we studied last week. The second aspect of holiness is the idea of purity. None of us are pure. Only God is pure. And so, when we look at holiness, we get the idea of set apart, because you cannot be part of Me and be holy. Holiness is set apart. Okay, let me switch around to you, He says, be ye set apart, for I am set apart. So there should be that conviction, there should be that challenge when you're trying to blend in with the world. Because I'm calling you out of that and teaching you righteousness. Are y'all with me so far? Okay. God is good. He does what is right and never does what is wrong. God is unstained, someone said, by an uncompromising with sin. He cannot. It's not that He will not, it's that He cannot. He cannot be imperfect. He cannot be wrong. Just keep in mind, when we start to judge Him, we're judging Him from a finite judgment. We don't have the capability to judge God. So we conclude He is good, and that's our standard. All right? He's unstained, He's, He's pure. God does not bend a little. When it comes to wrongdoing, He does not bend. The holiness of God demands that He judge sin because of His holiness. He has to judge what's wrong because He's right. If He ever bends towards wrong, then His standard of being good and right is tainted. We have to see He's holy, and because of His holiness, it demands Him to judge sin. Because it's against who He is. Are, are y'all with me here? I'm, I'm gonna say this all night, so, you know, I, I hope I'm, I'm not annoying you. Um, it's His holiness. So keep in mind that you can only call evil, evil, only if there is a God against whose standard you can measure evil. The reason why we know evil, because we're measuring it towards a holy, good God. That's how we know evil, when it doesn't match or measure to the standard of a holy God. Then we wouldn't be able to call evil evil. The reason why we can call evil evil is because we held it up to a holy God. The reason why you can say that ain't right, that means you knew something or what was right. That's the only way you can say that's not right. You have to hold it up to what is right. Y'all with me here? Then you cannot declare that. Now, for God to declare what is evil, He held it up to Himself. And it didn't mount up to His standard of being holy. So His holiness declares it to be evil, 'cause it cannot measure up to who He is. So bad would not be bad unless we had a standard that made it bad. We can only call something evil because we have a standard and a good and holy God. That's how we know what's evil and bad, because of a good, holy God. If not, everyone's good and no one's bad. And I'm gonna say it before you say it, Pastor, we know that ain't right, you right, because there is a good, holy God that shines light on the darkness or that which is opposite of who He is. Matthew's chapter nineteen, verse seventeen. Uh, Rev, can I use you tonight, uh, Reverend Greenlee?
Yes, sir, it says, and He said unto him, why callst thou me good? There is none good but one, that is God. But if thou wilt enter into life, keep the commandments.
Okay, what Christ was showing in His teaching was for us to get our mind back to where it needs to be, to get ourselves away from being self-righteous and justifying our own ways. You know, what caught me, um, uh, Dikin Agbou, uh, when I rededicated my life to the Lord, and, and, and Reverend Greenlee, I was so scared that, you know, I, I was, I was glad the Lord rededicated my life, I'm so glad He saved me, but I was so glad that He was gonna change His mind. So, so, so every day I would read Psalms one through fifty every day for almost six months. Psalms one through fifty, that, I, I, I took hours, I would sit there and study and read that every day. And I remember someone asking me, said, uh, um, how do you feel? And I said, well, you know, I, I ain't sinned all day. And the Lord had to convict me. Because, just because I wasn't doing the things I used to do, didn't mean I was not falling short in the thoughts and other things that was against God. Are you with me here? Now, the only way I was able to receive and learn it and understand it is because I held it up to a holy, good God. Disobedience, He began to remind me, rebellious. Remind me rebelliousness and other things where I wasn't even looking at. But then consider as being against God. Until I held it up against God. Am, am, I, am I helping anyone? Alright, so Jesus tells them, there's only one good. I want you to redirect. The understanding so that you don't fall on your works. And think, yeah, I did good today. I bought somebody's groceries. I said hello to my boss who I don't like. I made a fresh pot of coffee when I normally don't do it. I ain't fuss nobody out. I am good. There's none good but God. Are y'all with me? Alright, God always acts in a righteous manner. Because his nature is holiness. So everything he does is right. Uh-oh. Everything he does is right. He is both great and good. Because holy is the fullness expression of his character. Because it explains who he is. To the point God swears by his holiness. Ooh, I know you think that was in the scripture. Yes, it is. Psalms eighty-nine, verse thirty-five in the ESV. Rev, can you read that for me?
It says, once for all, I have sworn by my holiness. I will not lie to David.
Listen. I have sworn by my holiness. He has sworn by his holiness that one, he can't fail. Two, he can't lie. Three, he is good. And he is great. And because everything that is I created. I can only swear by my own holiness. And you think God needs you, and I think he needs me. No, I need him. And he has shown me that from time to time. If we want to understand the majesty, the distinctiveness, the uniqueness of God, we must understand it in the concert with his holiness. This is what I'm saying. In other words. It has to be in concert of his holiness. God's love is holy. His presence is holy. His ways are holy. His judgments are holy, et cetera. It has to be in concert of his holiness. For me to understand. Who he is. And all that he does. It has to be infiltrated by the holiness of God. When he touches me, it's holy. When he speaks to me, it's holy. When he guides me, it's holy. Because holiness. Or holy permeates who he is. Are y'all with me? You cannot speak of God without speaking of his holiness. Holy God, thank you. Because that's him. That's who he is, and everything he does is holy. It was a holy call that called us. There are holy moves that move us. There's the Holy Spirit that guides us. Everything he does must be in concert with. Holiness. So scripture, what it does, it clearly and repeatedly impresses upon our soul. And brings to our constant attention the holiness of God. It keeps reminding us that God we serve is holy. Stop talking like that. Stop acting like that. Stop treating him like that. He is holy. He's not a statue. God. He is, I got you. He is holy. Sing to a holy God. Pray to the holy God. Worship a holy God. He is holy and the scriptures constantly impresses that upon us. That we are serving a holy God. They.
Yeah, Daddy, thank you so much. And let me tell you, there's something, um, special about your gift of teaching because. Many a times when I go through things in life, uh, what I'm going through. And the next thing is maybe during some month, it will come up or during, uh, uh, Bible studies, it will come up. And I've been pondering on these. Uh, these particular subjects, you know, you are teaching this evening. You know, how the world have turned into something else, especially the so-called believers. We have find ourselves now like we worshiping a holy God. And the fact because we are believers. Now we want to turn God into a God of our errant God. Now we wanna turn him into an errant God. The God we send message, you know, when we make our decisions, we ask him to go and execute. Them, uh, 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 our, our mindset, the things we have planned to do, we put him into it to go and act for us. Now we don't see him again as a holy God. We don't see him again that. This is all not all about our standard. He is standard. He is pure as a God. And now we want to use him to put into our own standard to carry out our mission. And which is really not working. So I see the world now turning God into their own messenger. Instead of us being his servants.
Amen. And that's a, that's because of a lack of understanding and my people perish because of that. Um, Pastor. I, I got you, Brother Chauncey. Keep in mind that he's holy. When you sing a song to him, sing it from the heart because he's holy. If you gonna clap your hands, clap him because you know he's holy. Don't clap him because I asked. Clap him because you know he's holy. When you worship, you worship because you know he's holy. When you include him. You ask him if it's his will, because he's holy. You ask him if he wills it to be. If he can favor you, if he can bless you. We have forgotten that we're serving a holy God, but we'll stand up for a judge. We'll stop our carpool aside for police. We'll let other dignitaries, uh, get the respect. But when we get into the presence of God, or even when we speak of God, we lacking the understanding. That we are serving a holy God. We are serving a holy God. I, I just want that to resonate. The God that you're singing to is holy. Now, how do you know? He's accepting your song. How do you know that? You gotta raise it to his standard. You gotta see his standard. Am I doing it from my heart or am I doing it for my flesh? And you could be able to tell whether or not he is accepted or not. So how do we know? Know who. He is. Brother Chauncey?
Uh, yes, Pastor, um, yes. Um, also, uh, I'm reminded that man should never, uh, swear by him. Um. We're reminded that, um, man is reminded that our yes is to be yes and our no is to be no, but never to swear by him. Because of his holiness.
Yes, and, and listen, listen, uh. He's so holy. Now, it ain't because I'm saying it, it's because he said it about himself and he's revealing to me. What we're learning is. He's so holy, I wanna make sure. That I'm doing things pleasing to him. Do you know, let me tell you something, Sister Renee, he would rather you not clap for him. Than to hypocritically clap for him. You, how do you know that? He told the church, I'd rather you be shot or cold. What I can't stand is someone to fake like they know I'm holy, but in their heart. They act like I'm not holy.
My God.
So if you're not gonna sing, then don't sing. Just, just don't sing. But don't, don't get mad and sing. Or don't get forced to sing. I want you to sing praise, worship, read, study, fast, pray. Because you know the God that you're serving is alive and holy. Are y'all with me? This gonna ring all summer long. He's a holy God. The Psalms advise us to worship the Lord in the splendor of holiness. Dennis says tremble before him all the earth. Psalm ninety-six nine. Just gonna read it again. You know, we were supposed to worship the Lord in the splendor of his holiness. And we supposed to tremble. Before him. Okay, tremble, okay, what do you mean tremble, uh, Pastor? Okay, let, let me give you an idea. Um, um, uh, tremble in a way that you just, uh, ran a red light. And now you gotta go to court and the judge said, everybody in the courtroom getting these ten to fifteen years. And, and you saying, I just got a traffic light. And then he calls your name. Would you be trembling? Yes, you would, because you don't know what's gonna happen next. In other words, we supposed to praise and worship God. In the splendor of his holiness and we supposed to tremble before him. Because one thing, how did I get here? Thank to Jesus. Cause I would have not even had an invite if it wasn't for Christ. And now that I have access, you think I'm gonna self-rightfully arrogantly get into his presence? And tell him, this is what I need you to do by tomorrow? And he can in return say, but then you tell tomorrow to do it. Are, are y'all with me? Psalms ninety-six nine.
Psalm ninety-six nine, oh, worship the Lord in the beauty of holiness, fear before him all the earth.
Worship the Lord in the beauty of holiness. In the beauty of holiness. Whenever people in the Bible saw the Lord and his awesome holiness, they trembled with fear. Turn to these two scriptures for me, Rev, and everyone. They tremble with fear. They tremble. With fear. You remember when they, the children of Israel told Moses, why can't God speak to us? You know, he, you know, he can't, why he can't speak to us? And the Lord said to Moses, bring the people to the mountain. Good God almighty. And the mountains roar. Listen, God didn't even. Say anything yet. And the people tremble. I don't even, I can only, can only imagine what that sound was like. To the point they went back and told Moses, you let God speak to you. But see how we can get to the point where we can get above ourselves. And forget the God that we serve in Isaiah chapter six, verse five.
Isaiah six, five, then said I, woe is me, for I am undone. Because I am a man of unclean lips and I dwell in the midst of a people of unclean lips. For my eyes have seen.
Go for it.
The Lord of hosts.
Okay. I am a man with. Unclean lips, Lo- Lord. Who can help you? You're a holy God. Who can help you? Oh, I'm a man with unclean lips. And I tremble at your presence. Who can help you? Revelation chapter one, verse seventeen. Everyone who. Understood the awesome holiness of God, they tremble with fear.
Revelation one seventeen, and when I saw him, I fell at his feet as dead. And he laid his right hand upon me, saying unto me, fear not, for I am first and the last.
Those moments made people realize how unholy, unholy and truly, uh, how they truly were because of sin. When you're in the presence of the Lord, you realize how unholy you are. And listen. How do you think people get to a point where they know they can sing and God like it? Or they know they can pray and God hear it? Or they know they can preach and God's accepting it? And not even realizing. The strength in the way of pride. Every time we get in his presence. We should tremble. In awe of his holiness. I'm gonna work it out. I, I'm gonna work it out tonight. I promise. I'm gonna work it out tonight. Because everyone in the Bible tremble at his presence. Do you, do you know in, in, in the Old Testament, when they had the, the tabernacle? And, and the high priests were getting the Holy of Holies, uh, you know, historians and, uh, and, and many have said, even Josephus recorded that. They had to tie bells on the priests. So that when he went in there, and if he was still moving around, they knew that the Lord was accepting. His work. But if the bell didn't shake anymore. He was consumed. By God. Look how holy God is. How holy God is. That the people tremble. When the high priest went into the Holy of Holies. They tremble. Holiness comes from the Hebrew word kadush. The Hebrew word kadush, that's where we get the word holiness. It's the Hebrew word kadush. Which means to cut. To be holy means to be cut off, cut off or separate. From everything else. Kadush. To be cut or separate from everything else. He is holy. We are unholy. Because we're measured by the standard of a holy God. He is a sinless God. We are sinful because we have been measured by unholy God. Kadush means to, to separate or to cut off. It means to be in a class of your own. It's distinct from anything that has ever existed or will ever exist. To be entirely morally pure. Kadush. To be entirely morally pure all the time in every way possible. He is always holy. There's never a time where he is not holy. Isaiah forty twenty-five. Any questions so far before Rev read? Any questions? Okay, let's go for it.
To whom then will ye liken me, or shall I be equal, saith the Holy One?
Did y'all get that? Did y'all highlight that? He said, okay, you bad. Who are you gonna liken? To me? Who can measure to me? I'm holy. Now who you got? That can measure to a holy God? Sister Pippi, you are muted. We can't hear you.
So that's like, you know, just thinking about that, that's like when Moses was going, he, he was telling Moses to go to Pharaoh. And Pharaoh was, uh, Moses said, who shall I say send me? And he said, you tell him that I am sent you, you know, and it's like, so when you think of that, you know. There is nothing else except you. So soon as they hear I am, they automatically recognize, oh, God sent you, like, there is no other, like. Like he, you know, I don't wanna say he the man, but like, he the, he the man, you know, it's like, there is no other.
No, I understand what you're saying. It is, he, he is the law. This is why our prayers says you have to first believe he is. Okay, I'm gonna get excited here. What puts strength behind your prayers is that you believe he is. I, I'm not gonna pray if I don't believe he is. Are y'all with me here? When you pray, what, what gives you the confidence to know he hears you? Is because you know he is who he say he is.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm praying to the law of the world.
Yes, Lord.
I'm bringing my cares upon the one who holds everything. I'm asking the one who can change everything. I'm seeking the one who's in control of everything. My confidence is the one who's outside of everything.
My God.
And he's holy. Without the holiness of God, there will be no moral law to which human being is responsible. Without the holiness of God, there will be no divine anger with sin. Without the holiness of God, there will be no perfect son sent as an acceptable sacrifice for sin. If there was no holiness, if there was no holiness, everyone would be right. If there was no holiness, there will no be, would be no laws to govern ourselves by. Do you know, because God is holy, that's how we know you wrong, you wrong for doing that, I'm wrong for doing this, they wrong for doing that, the world ain't right, the world is, that's because it's measured to a holy God. So without his holiness, there would be no, no moral law.
My God.
Without holiness of God, there would be, or would have been, no vindication of the resurrection. Without the holiness of God, there will be no final defeat of Satan. This is why I'm glad he's holy. If not, Satan would not be defeated. Am I the only one get excited? Uh, without the holiness of God, Satan would not be defeated if God was not holy. Satan is defeated because God is holy. You wanna know God is real? Cuz Satan is proving it. Okay, here it is, Reverend Allen, here it is, I'm gonna mess somebody up. Evil is proving the goodness of God. You know God is good, cuz evil is proving that there is a good God.
Oh, yes.
For us to look and to find evil, we had to put it up against something good. Okay, all right, all right. Now, to put it up to something good means that which is opposite is actually of Lord's standard. That's why you can't raise Satan on the level of my holy God. Oh, yeah, you see, that's, that's the art of deception. I'm gonna do a series one of these days, probably gonna be in the winner of deception, the art of deception, because Satan got man thinking that he's just as equal as God, but failing, man failing to realize that he has been measured against God and declared evil. It's a Lord's standard, it's a Lord's standard, uh, it's a Lord's standard. You know why? Because at one time Reverend Allen, Lucifer was good. Are y'all getting this? And, 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 and because he went against holiness, now he is evil. And how do we know that? Because it's been raised up against the holiness of God. Now he's considered falling. Am I helping anybody so far? Okay, here it is. Let me go back. Without the holiness of God, there would be no hope of a new heaven and earth. Where holiness would reign over us forever. If there was no holiness of God, there is no, listen, calling of the saints. There is no second coming of Christ if there was no holiness of God. If there was no holiness of God, there's no hope for the new heaven and earth, he declared will be. If there was no holiness. The reason why we get excited is because you and I on the side of a holy God. Holiness is to be regarded not as a distinct attribute, but as the result of all God's moral perfection. In other, in other words, everything you think of God, you gotta say, he is holy. He's good, that's holy. He is loved, that's holy. He's perfect, that's holy. He's wonderful, that's holy. Omniscient, that's holy. Unimpotent, that's holy. I'm not present, that's holy. Everything is holy. When we think of God's holiness, we think of his utter separation from sin, because everything in the creation is affected and influenced by sin. Sin can't influence him. Sin cannot influence him. Are y'all with me? I, I had, I, I had this question, Reverend Allen, I, I wasn't gonna ask it, but I, you know, I, I'm gonna ask it, Reverend Greenlee, this was gonna be on our table talk. Can truth be the object of hatred? Or can it cause hatred? When you raise it up against holiness, it can be the object of hatred. Okay, Brother Bruce?
Oh, I was gonna say, um, it could be, but then because God is eminent and perfect, um, truth causes conflict, and you have to be in God to understand conflict. Cuz if you're not in God, you're not understanding conflict. So it can pose to have a problem.
Yeah, anything you raise up towards God, it exposes. Because it is, he is right. Everything he does is perfect. I'm just trying to, just drive this home. Let's turn to Revelation, chapter fifteen, verse four. I'll read this, Rev. Revelation, chapter fifteen, verse four. Who shall, did, did, are we all on the same page? Revelation fifteen, verse four. Who shall not fear thee, O Lord, and glorify thy name? Who in the world that you created think they are outside of the world that you created? Who shall not fear thee, O Lord, and glorify thy name? For thou only art holy. I want you to underline that, I want you to circle that, I want you to add that in your prayer. For thou only art holy. For all the nations shall come and worship before thee, for thy judgments are made manifest. Now I'm gonna kinda give a little bit of this scripture, but I wanted you to circle that. So between the announcement of the seven last plagues, we learned this in Revelation, and the unveiling of them, there's a dramatic pause. And John has two more visions. In the first, John describes what he sees in verse two, and then what he hears in verse three. The conquerors conquered the dragon by the blood of the Lamb and by the word of their testimony. And they conquered the beast by not taking its mark and keeping the commandments of God and the faith of Jesus. These were the ones who made it through the tribulation. And at the end, the praise was, who shall not fear you? You have taken down all. Who shall not fear you? For thou only art holy. So the song of praise now continues in verse four, completing what the saints had begun in the previous verse. It is called the Song of Moses in the Old Testament. The servant of God, and now it's the Song of the Lamb. This is a song. Listen, don't get me wrong, I, 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 you know, I, I think the, the Christian artists, they, you know, I, God loves them. I think some of the songs are on point. I think we gotta watch out. I think our songs, Digger Thomas, need to get back to, who shall not fear you? O Lord, and glorify thy name? I think we need, we need words like this, we need verses like this. For thou art only, you're holy by yourself. Do you know if you just sang that part of the song, that, that, that part of the song, just sing that tonight. Just, just go back to Revelation, chapter fifteen and verse four, and, and put your own tune to it. I, I don't, you know, you put your own tone, tune, and then, and then start singing, who shall not fear thee? O Lord, and glorify thy name? For thou only art holy. You start singing that, heaven gonna take over. Then you can say blessings on top of blessings, you can say that, but you can't say that until you declare this. Are y'all with me here? He first got the tremble at his feet to recognize the great work that was done at salvation. That the great work is not trying to get you another job or turn your little season around right now. The great work was at the cross, and I tremble at your feet. Because you didn't have to do it, but you did. You are holy and holy by yourself. And I tremble at, at your feet.
My God.
It's, it's, it's now sung by people who have victory over the beast over his image and over his mark and over the number of his name. These are people who saw God conquer the beast, not just you and I, who've been raptured up. These are the ones who made it through the tribulation, and they say, my God, the strength of God's holiness, he has conquered the beast. And what happened is they are rejoicing with the harps and the greatness of God. They are rejoicing because of his works and his ways, because of God's perfect holiness throughout eternity. He is to be worshiped. Worship, why? Because he is holy. Not because he worked it out for me, not because doing great things on my, no, he is to be worshiped because, trust these spirits, he is holy. Period. All right, let's work this thing out. Can we work it out? First Samuel, chapter two, verse two. Uh, get that for me, Rev. Uh, Leviticus nineteen to two. Dignitas Brinson. Uh, Sister Laverne. Exodus, chapter three, verse five. And pretty, I'm sorry, first lady, Leviticus, chapter eleven, verse forty-four and forty-five. Y'all gotta, uh, excuse me, this is pretty lady, I keep looking at, uh, Candace, and you know, sometimes it throws me off. Uh, okay, all right. Uh, First Samuel, chapter two, verse two, English Standard.
There is none holy like the Lord, for there is none besides you, there is no rock like our God.
Okay, now, you got the first verse to your song. Revelation's chapter, did y'all get that? That, chapter fifteen, verse four, that was one verse to your song. We gonna make a song tonight. That's the first verse to your song. The second verse to the song is what Reverend Greenlee just said. Say it again, Reverend Greenlee.
There is none like you, uh, there is none holy like the Lord, for there is none besides you, there is no rock like our God.
Okay, that's, that's verse number two to your song, tonight, to your song, the rest of this week. All this week, just tell God that I recognize how holy you are. I am seeing how holy you are. It is being revealed to me how holy you are. Okay, let's look at the third verse of this song, Leviticus, chapter nineteen, verse two.
Speak unto all the congregation of the children of Israel, and say unto them, ye shall be holy, for I, the Lord, your God, am holy.
We should tremble and be willing to follow the leading of the Holy Spirit because God is holy. You know, it's funny, we do more I'm sorries to people than we do to God. Most people get at least three, two sorries when you step on their foot, or they step on your foot. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Most people get three to four sorries when they cut you off in a sentence. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But when it comes to God, we ignore our repented heart. That's because many have forgotten that he is holy. Okay. Exodus, chapter three, verse five, one of my favorite parts of, uh, the song, he tells Moses, go ahead, Sister Laverne.
And he said, draw not nigh hither, put off thy shoes from, off thy feet, for the place whereon thou standest is holy ground.
Do you know how how awesome that is? I know Moses was just excited to get in God's presence, the Lord said, hold on one second. Take those dirty shoes off. The place you're standing is holy. Man, you know, we all can, you know, we all say this, if I was Moses, and I'm, yeah, you was Moses, but you wasn't, and even Moses didn't wanna be Moses at the time. Because you're in the presence of a holy God. So much so, he did not want him to step on the ground with his shoes. You know, I, I, we, we are trying our best to just defend him, the holiness of God, as much as, as much as possible, trying to grab it with the scriptures. But he is so holy that the shoes Moses had on, he could not even step on the ground because the presence of the Lord was there. Levit- Leviticus, chapter eleven, verse forty-four and verse forty-five, the last part of our song.
Leviticus eleven, forty-four and forty-five. For I am the Lord, your God, ye shall therefore sanctify yourselves, and ye shall be holy, for I am holy. Neither shall you defile yourselves with any manner of creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth. For I am the Lord that bringeth you up out of the land of Egypt to be your God, ye shall therefore be holy, for I am holy.
Now notice, in, in Israel's time, in the Old Testament, the Lord even reign, reign, uh, more in the New Testament, and I, I'm gonna explain it in our last few slides. What has been echoed is him being holy. He's reminding us, I'm not this little God y'all think. Okay? You, you, you don't just send me on nobody. I send you. You don't make me do nothing. I make you. God is not afraid of us. We tremble at his feet. Digna Book said, we don't move God the way we think we moving him. We hope we're in favor of the way is moving. But we don't control God. We're controlled by him. Are y'all with me? So the clearest, the most discernible, the most understandable. the most understandable manifestation of the holiness of God is seen in the incarnation of Christ Jesus. That was the clearest, discernible, understandable manifestation of the holiness of God in Christ. Now, here's what's powerful. Turn to Mark, chapter one, verse twenty-four.
Mark one, twenty-four. Saying, let us alone, what have we to do with thee, thou Jesus of Nazareth? Art thou come to destroy us? I know thee who thou art, the Holy One of God.
Okay, okay. I, 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 I don't, I don't even think, I don't even think they recognize what went on. I don't even think the saints at Hittite World Bible Church just recognized what went on. This is what went on. I had to write this. And I called it a key. Cause you cannot recognize one who never existed. Okay, let, let me read, I'll read again, uh, Reverend Greenie. This is what the demon said. Leave us alone. What have you to do with us? Jesus of Nazareth. Did you come to destroy us? We know who you are, Holy One. Knowings that the devil and his demons can declare. And the saints that are redeemed will get. And one thing we know that Christ was the son of a holy God is because you can't recognize someone who never existed. They say, we know who you are. You ain't fooling us. You the Holy One of God. Oh, my goodness. It, does Jesus exist? Ask the devil.
Yeah.
And you cannot recognize one who never existed. If he never existed, they would not have recognized them. The reason why they recognize him is because before them, he was. Uh, now, 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 I, I'm sure it may have been more. Cause you know, when you see Jesus, you tremble. I, I can see them saying, here comes our Creator. Is he here to destroy us? Show the power of God towards demons. Where the enemy will have us to think that he is more powerful. These demons asking Jesus, did you come to destroy us? If they didn't think he had all power, they would have never said that. Um, if I don't think you got power, that ain't coming out my mouth. Am I helping anyone? It, it, it's two people. Okay, Sister Kenny, and then I'm just gonna let y'all go home. Sister Kenny?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought you had something to say.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm praising God for what she said.
Okay, okay. Alright, so in Hebrews one, we read God after he spoke long ago. This is what Hebrews one says. A long ago to his fathers and the prophets in many portions, and in many ways, in the la- in these last days, had spoken to his son, whom he appointed heir of all things, through whom also, the Bible tells us, he made the world. And he, the Son, is the radiance of his glory and the exact representation of his nature. Christ is the exact representation of holiness. That's why Jesus said, we, we saw this last week, when you see me, you seen the Father. Perfect. Sinless. Holy. In conclusion, we can echo the words of all creation, that God's holiness is his complete and utter uniqueness, distinct from all other beings in its infinite and absolute worth and beauty. He is complete, unique, distinct from any other being. He is worthy to be praised because of his holiness. I got two slides. I can remember now. I got two slides left. And, and, and this is how I wanna end this. Three slides. And the more our hearts are captured in all by God's holiness, the more acceptable our approaches to God will be. And God's holiness is beautiful. Okay? His holiness is beautiful. When God appointed singers in Israel to worship him, he instructed in Zechariah, chapter two, twenty, verse twenty-one, they should praise him for the beauty of his holiness. We're praising him for the beauty of his holiness. Lord, I praise you because of your holiness. Let me work this verse out right here. I'm gonna gonna read it. Reverend Greenie, Isaiah, chapter six. In your hearing, while I'm reading this, I pray that the Holy Spirit gives you a spiritual vision of the holiness of God and how Isaiah trembled. Isaiah six, verse one, when you have it, just wave, just let me know you have it. In the year that King Uzzai died, I saw also the Lord sitting upon a throne, high and lifted up, and its train filled the temple. Above it stood, stood the serbums. Each one had six wings. With twain, he covered his face, and with twain, he covered his feet, and with twain, he did fly. And one cried unto another and said, holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts. The whole earth is filled full of his glory. And the post of the door moved at the voice of him that cried. And the house was filled with smoke. Then said I, woe is me, my response to the holy, holy, holy of God. Woe is me, for I am undone because I am a man of unclean lips, and I dwell in the midst of people of unclean lips. For my eyes have seen the King, the Lord of hosts. Then flew one of the serbums unto me, having a live coal in his hand, which he had taken with the tongues from the altar. And he laid it upon my mouth and said, lo, this has touched thy lips, and thy iniquity is taken away, and thy sin purged. Also I heard the voice of the Lord saying, whom shall I send, and also, and who will go for us? Then said I, I, here am I, send me. And he said, go and tell the people, hear ye indeed, but understand not, and see ye indeed, but perceive not. Make the heart of the people fat, and make their ears heavy, and shut their eyes, lest they see with their eyes, and hear with their ears, and understand with their heart, and convert, and be healed. Then said I, Lord, how long? And he answered, until the cities be wasted without inhabitant, and the houses without man, and the land be utterly desolate. And the Lord have removed men far away, and there be a great forsaken in the midst of the land. But yet in it all shall be a tenth, and it shall return, and shall be eaten as a tree, a tall tree, and an, as an oak, whose substance is in them when they cast their leaves. So the holy seed shall be the substance thereof. The presence of the Lord. When one recognizes that they're serving a holy God, that they're praying to a holy God, that they're seeking a holy God, the first response is tremble. Lord, don't ever let me get to the place where I think my words are strong enough to match your presence. Let me stutter because of who you are. Show me how to have less words so that my heart can lead that which I speak. Remind me that you are in control of everything. That nothing goes on without you. That I dare not let Satan nor his demons speak highly of you when they are not redeemed. Let me be reminded of the perfect example of your holiness in Christ Jesus. So that I can surrender to you so I can be used by you. Saints, when we take a moment to recognize who he is, it will straighten us up in our prayer, our praise, our worship, our attention, and our fellowship. When we recognize that we serve a holy, holy God. The holiness of God means that we can only approach him on his terms through Jesus. That's the only way we could approach him. That was the only way we were able to approach him through Jesus. Is that awesome? Or what? All that he has done for you and I. His holiness, we serve a holy, a holy God.
Hallelujah.
A holy God. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him. Heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him. Heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. How many believe that tonight? What a holy God we serve. What a holy God we serve. Angels bow before him. Heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. We thank God for concluding our lesson, showing us and reminding us of his holiness. And it is my prayer from this point on that that rings in your ear and your heart. And when it does, that you smile because you're on his side. And you're not against him. That's, that's my prayer. That it rings. And when you sing a song, that you sing it knowing that he's a holy God. That he is a holy, a holy God. When we come back after the break, summer break, we'll pick back up on the blessings of God. The blessings of, of God. Blessings of God. Anyone have any comment, concern, anything on this last study until we come back? Anyone? Any comment? If you haven't talked, let somebody know that you can talk. If you haven't said nothing all year. But anybody wanna make any comments or anything on tonight's lesson?
Pastor, I, I wanna make, uh, ask the question.
Okay.
Um, on the slide where you gave us for the four scriptures that were the songs, one of the verses you said already, which wasn't on there, which one was that?
Okay. Does everybody, anybody remember that? It, you say it was four, four verses?
You said four, one, two, three, four scriptures for the song, and the first one started, you, you didn't, wasn't included in the slide, but the second one was First Samuel two, two, but it was one before that. Revelation, oh, I'm sorry. Revelations one, seventeen.
Okay. Now, Sister Renee, it wasn't an actual song. I, we just made a song tonight. Alright, that's our song, and we can just put some music to it, but that's, uh, that's, sometimes that's all we need to say. See, don't stop thinking that you have to converse with God like you do, uh, you and I. Sometimes you just have to say, Lord, you are holy. Sometimes that's all I can say. I mean, as much I can say. Lord, you're holy. You're magnificent. You're wonderful. And I pray that you accept this. Your God of peace. I tremble at your presence. It, 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 it got to a point, Reverend Allen, s- sometimes I frown up. I know the Lord don't care. Sometimes I frown, say, Lord, forgive me. Forgive me. For you are holy and you are righteous. Forgive me for all I have done. Forgive me. I tremble not just on a train ride, not just in the plane. I tremble because my life is in your hands. I tremble because you're a holy God. But I get excited because you are my Father. Do you not know the one that the devil trembles is your Father? The one that the devil trip, trip, trembles against is your Father. And Christ has given us a way that now we can pray to him as Christ is our intercessor. This is Chauncey, Father. This is Kenny. This is Queenie. And we can pray to him. Here it is, here's what's powerful, knowing that he hears us. Good God almighty. When you pray tonight, you get up off your feeble knees, knowing that he just heard me. He is a holy, a holy God. Father, we thank you. We get so caught up in in who you are. We get entangled in you. We get wrapped up in your, your attributes. And all we can say is, wow. You are a holy God. Thank you so much for finding me. Thank you for working it out for me. Thank you for creating a plan for me. Thank you for anointing me to do your work. We tremble at your feet. We praise you and we worship you because of who you are. You are holy all by yourself. No one can make us tremble but you. We don't fear no one but you. You are God all by yourself. Sickness tremble at your feet. The enemy trembles at your feet. Everything trembles at your feet because of your holiness. Everything trembles at your feet because of your holiness. Holy Spirit, have your way, continue to order our steps. Let us know when we're getting in your way of the work you want to do in our lives. We thank you, we magnify your name. And it's all possible because of Jesus. He was recognized on earth. It just strengthens our testimony of what all you went through for us. We ask all these things, thank you for good health and strength, thank you for protecting us. Watch over the families who lost their children, who thought they were coming home that day. Lord, they need you, doesn't take away from your holiness. They need your grace and your mercy. Watch over the families. That the enemy doesn't work off the fear of people, to only destroy them. But let this be a turnaround for someone to come to know you as a Savior, we pray for them. So much so that it could be our children, could have been us. Thank you. And we pray for everyone tonight who's going through, Lord, who has given up hope, who doesn't feel like you're working on their behalf, Lord, I pray for their strength tonight. You are a holy God. Holy is your name, and holy you are. We thank you. We pray your will, that your will be done. Not just in our lives, that your will continue being recognized in this world. It's in Jesus' name we pray, now, Lord, we take a break from the study together, but not from you. Now let us walk it out. Give us every open door to witness, let someone ask a question that we talked about, you prepared us, you gave us the lessons, now here comes the test. Let us pass the test, oh God, that you'll be glorified through us. And we ask all these things, in Jesus' name we pray, that everyone say, amen. Wonderful class, wonderful class, you all, you all passed, you all passed, thank the Lord, you passed, nobody stayed back. So when we come back, I'll see everybody on the next level of our study, the blessings of God.